...the leaders of the United States of America and the U.S. Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Holston?
Here.
Councilor Hadley?
Here.
Councilor Whitney?
Councilor Whitney is excused, she's not being elected.
Councilor Forkum?
Here.
Councilor Maxwell?
Here.
Councilor Kinian?
Here.
Councilor Hollis?
Here.
Thank you, everybody, we have a forum. Additional directions or adjustments to the agenda. On the agenda, you can see that the work session is first, I'm actually going to put it down at the bottom rather than where it is. Also, during the council comments, although we can put it on, I hope that we'll have discussion about the town hall there. We've been really wanting to participate in this one. Okay, so let's move into our regular session. We're going to have a comment, Larry? Oh, there you are, you're the only one. Do you want to speak now, or do you want to speak at the end?
Yeah. Glitter Suite 7636, Long Island Road, Holders Order. I might thank Chrissy Hollis and Don Kenyon for their presentation last night and organizing all that. They did a really good job in helping inform the public of their questions. And I'd like to see more of these town hall meetings so that we can ask questions instead of just getting answers back from others. And I think it was very well organized, and thank you very much for putting it on.
Thank you. Thank you, there are name comments, announcements, and proclamations. So, I have, I don't know, there's an announcement or proclamation?
There is.
Yep, let's do that now.
Mayor Mulcher, if I could have Lieutenant Scott Hollis, EMR Leo Robb, EMT Christina Hollis, and EMT Guy Firstbarger, front center.
Guy was not able to make it tonight.
Well. All right.
Say no, we have no idea what's going on here.
Some segments of military line here.
Down here. I'll go here.
Tonight, we honor four of our dedicated EMS staff. When a citizen has a cardiac event, it is critical that the EMS crews recognize the signs of a potential heart attack and alert the receiving hospital as soon as possible. With early notification, hospital staff are able to prepare for the patient's arrival and expedite their definitive care. Tonight, we honor paramedics Scott Hollis, EMR Leo Robb, EMT Chrissy Hollis, and for being part of this critical chain of care. These three responded to a chest pain call in October and immediately diagnosed the critical status of the patient. This talented crew quickly alerted the hospital, giving the staff a 37-minute lead time to prepare for this critically ill patient, and allowing them to process the patient from ER to catheter lab in eight minutes upon their arrival. Their exceptional professional ability and steadfast devotion to duty, these three have been recognized with the October STEMI Award.
So, put the audience into its own state of heart, correct?
And STEMI stands for segment elevation myocardial infarction. Because I'm sure a paramedic must have heard that. Heart attack.
This is more come by. Scott?
Aye, sir, kiel. Thank you. So, who? Hospital.
The hospital, yes.
Very cool. I've never seen them do that before. They've got velocity.
All right. So, in Mayor's comments, I think you don't have any comments that we aren't going to be needing to, because we're going to talk about the town hall. I think that was my own comment. It gets better later. So, I will go back to it again. So, let's go to council comments. If you have any comments, council, or you just left the one thing at the town hall, Don, go ahead.
I would love to see if we could talk about quickly adding a regular finance report to our, either our first or second meeting of every month. Bill has asked a couple of times, different counselors individually, what they'd like to see, but we've never really talked about it as a council and made a formal decision. And I'd like to get some consistency back with that.
Let's have that to our next, our next agenda, so we can talk that and we'll have some, I think what we can do is put some reports together, or samples of what we've had before, so we can kind of look at it and then determine what we want. And then ask them to produce those, and show them first, because that would be your founding, so I don't think that's what you want.
But would you? Well, since we haven't had financial reports, maybe since the beginning of October, I can't remember. I was really hoping it was something that we could particularly discuss, get something started, and get a report out.
Well, I don't agree with that, but if we're lucky, the council deals. Go ahead.
I was just going to say those financial reports would be great, however, the ones that we've gotten in the past are very dim. Really hard for me to understand, if you can imagine. So, I think something that simplifies it, you know, far each other.
I agree. I kind of hope that we can, if we look at what we've had, you know, in the past years, going back and saying, okay, this is what we have. And then we can sit with somebody in front of us and say, I kind of know what I would like to see, but council, you haven't had as much experience with, with the report than it has taught. And what we've got, because, you know, given him and I agree, in the past, it was going too much, and not the information we needed anyway. So, I'm thinking that if we had something in front of us to say, okay, this is what we want. Bill, I think you've talked to some, a couple of their points about what they wanted, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we've gotten a kind of a general idea?
Got a general idea. I'm still having, I guess, what, of course, you want some reports to come right off the system, which tend to be, as you say, dense, there's a lot of detail in there. You want those as fat, or you want those as backup, and I can do a kind of, I can do a kind of highlight report, like, or a sense of general fund, or overall, what, what are the, you know, the items that need explanation.
I like the idea of somebody that's easier than me, but I personally also really like to get them up. And I know that's probably overwhelming, and so I know it's a lot of pages, but maybe if we could just have those emailed to council once more, and then just have a summary at a council meeting to report to them.
We could, we could do that. We could, I can run the MOP PDF them and email them out. You know, if that works for folks that have the ability to read the PDFs, or we can probably put it in the box, if you, you know, we can do a number of different things there to get them to you. But, you know, we can do that and present highlights of the meeting, or, you know, maybe everyone a chance to review them.
The budget we do have, are you going to put it so we know how much, you know, percentage we spent on, you know, from when day one to day N, how much is left in the year?
Yeah, that, that comes out on the report in terms of a percentage of the annual budget that's left.
Yeah.
That'll show up on the, on the report.
Okay.
And I can, when I'm doing highlight reports, I pick your council that I want to pay attention to, I can do, I can do that same thing, I can show how much is left in the budget.
Yeah, I kind of, for me, what I, the value that I would like to get out of it is be able to look at it and have the budget lines, and that's the little we're talking about in expense. We can look at it and go, oh, we're, we're here to date in this line, this budget line, and knowing the percentage is kind of nice, too. But also being able to have that monthly report of checks, like, what was spent from our last cycle, to think about a report.
So, when you say that monthly report of checks, you think that one of them has had more?
Well, maybe not monthly, but period, of whatever time from last time frame.
So, there are a few different of your check registers that we have. One, you'll see that I have initially, that's what I initially assigned checks, and that reflects the type of check that I have in mind. So, it's usually one of the, does that usually have a two week, or a week period? It's a weekly?
Yeah, it's about, maybe you want to leave.
And so, there'll be several, several of those for the month. And then I noticed that you have also produced something that's a little bit more like a check register.
Yeah. Get some hours here, or some.
And you have, you have that option, too. That's a little more than the, 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 the check that you're signing. So, we kind of want to think about what we want at the check register.
Well, I'd like to be able to, when I see the list of payments that are made, I'd like to be able to look at this and go, oh, what fund does that come out of?
So, you want to be able to see a check written, and you want to know what?
Not necessarily the check, but it is that check sheet that says, written through Acme Motors, or whatever it says is taken out of the police department, and from this line item. And then you can refer to the next page and go, okay, we spent $500 through Acme, and we've got $1,000 left in that line item. Is that, is that too cumbersome?
Well, those two don't appear on the one report. You get, there's a combination of things, but then Paul was talking about, which is the data revenue expenses will show how much is spent in a particular line item, and how much is left in the budget. The check register would show you, show you that, and there's no real way to, they'll show you the detail, what's spent in the account, but they don't have a comparison to the budget number. So, you might be looking at a $500 item, you know, on the, on the expenditure report, on the check report, but that would be within a $10 item on that line item, so it won't tell you much versus the line item. And it doesn't really.
Is that because of the software that we use?
Well, sort of. But it's, it's very difficult to, it's very difficult to look at one, a single item like a check or something, and, and, and compare that to a whole line item in a budget. How many, you know, the detail and then do it with a line item. You just have to pull that information together in that batch, and basically what I'm trying to say.
So, Councilor Hollis, are you looking for a description, and not the check, but a description, that a check written? You know, Acme, how our company's, the check number, I mean, is that what you're looking for?
I don't care about the check number and that, I care about knowing what expenditures clearly are going out of what fund, and then what the fund is. Just so that as we're going through the year, we see that number and go, oh, wow, we're up to budget.
So, is it more like what the council report was asking for?
How much?
Expenditures versus budget? And that kind of percentage of burn?
I think so, but can you see, like, who the check is written to?
Not, not just a number.
Maybe you can simulate to get the report that I signed when I signed up checks, gives you, gives you the line that says, this is the check that actually, that was made for this much, it comes out of this fund. And then there's that year-to-date current that sometimes doesn't make it through that.
And it wouldn't have to be the same report?
You'd have two reports. Yeah, I'm just saying, that's what I'm saying. If you have two reports, it's, 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 it's probably not going to work well, in terms of trying to, you know, combine them, if you will.
I really just want to advocate for those being PDF digital copies, because I really hate having a bunch of papers that I have to shred.
And I think each of us, if it counts, should, should probably say, I'm comfortable getting all my things electronically.
That's true.
I prefer to get my things back papered. And then we won't just arbitrarily, we got seven paper copies?
I think that would be a very bad idea.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's anything for me.
I didn't make one, one clarification related to the question. There is a report, and in fact, the account table report that I work with, the preparation that I run, I look at. It does, it tells you the account number, and within the account number is the fund number. So, by looking at that, you know the fund number, like, for example, in 232, the emergency service, in that 230 streets. If you know those account numbers, and the accounts that are using the group sheet for that, to chart the account.
I don't.
The chart down, you can, you can tell what fund it's from.
So, with all over in the budget?
Yeah, definitely, with all over in the budget, with all over in the budget. And so, to answer your question, on that report, you can tell what fund that, by looking at the account number, which has the fund number embedded in it, you can tell what fund it came out of.
So, would you be able to have a report at our first December meeting, or would the second December meeting? I mean, I, I don't know how, what, what.
The, the reports are really pretty easy to produce, so we can return them around very quickly.
You say you like it.
It's, it's exploring what, exploring, exploring, I mean, you know, you're going to need to think about and figuring out what's going on, it's, it's, the reports are not real good.
So, we look forward to seeing the first December report at our next meeting? And is that too soon?
No, I think that's fine.
Okay, and then we can look at them and kind of decide whether or not we're, or what we're looking for. Not the case?
I just want to be sure I understand what you're suggesting. We have to bring paper copies and everything to the next council meeting, so we can look at them all?
Or if you would prefer a PDF, you can have a PDF. I'm just saying, a good way, you'll have it in front of you, so that we can talk about it. If you want to look at it on electronic, electronically, that's fine, I mean, there's no problem with that. You can choose to look at it anywhere you want, but I want to be able to talk about it, but it's in front of us. The one way or the other.
And actually, electors is the, the charter, actually, mandate that council, every ESA check register, especially, must have written this for that. So, what we'll plan to provide, I think, in person, would be a statement of revenue and expense, which will show the, the actual centers to date versus the budget line item, or the, the budget, or the, the percentage. And all, and then the check register, which should show you individual items that have been paid, and you can look at the number on there to see what funds those, they have, they have come out of. So, start, start with that, and then we can work, work from there, and if you want to.
The charter count.
Or the charter count. And then we can look at that, and based on that, and we can, we can, we can do a high-level kind of report, or some kind of report that I can put together for you. I like going to graphics.
You like graphics, I like graphics.
Does that sound like the plan?
Yes, thank you, Bill.
So, let's talk about the town hall. I'll start, and I was really pleased with it. Nancy Councilor-Hollis, Nancy Councilor-Pinney, and all the other participants that worked in it, you know, with James and, 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 and.
I'm.
So, thank you very much. I, I personally think that, you know, I've learned some information, but I can, you know, help flesh out some things that I only partially knew. I think it's given us all of a standard, that I'll not have to start on, you know, to answer some questions. And she has a dialogue, you know, what's going on throughout the town, actually has formalized a little bit, and we can continue on with that. The goal for me of that, with education, but that's not the end. That's just, it's very much what we need to go. So, I'd love to hear your comments, what's left here.
Yeah, Chris Burman said that it was really well. I mean, of course, this is probably the first public meeting for town halls in quite a while, so there's room for refinement and all of that. But I do think that as a council, we should discuss having, potentially having a quarterly town hall meeting. I know we have a lot of people in our community who are really interested about the ECA grant that we just got, and I think that that would be the perfect next topic for people to come and learn about. So, maybe we could set up a, or generate some ideas on town hall topics, and then really start to actually simply enter the calendar. Because it's very clear with how many people attended, that our community is very eager for information and engagement from.
How many people attended? Like, 86.
86.
86, yeah. It'd be possible, there's a little more that just came across the field. And we didn't record, like, the panel, or.
Okay.
Myself, and you, you probably did.
Yeah, I wasn't.
I think it was very informal for all the people that did come. They got to see what we know. You know, we know that stuff, because we see it all the time. The people in the audience did not know that, because I had a lot of people ask, I didn't understand that, and that's something that they were informed of. I already knew most everything that happened, because I was very informed, and it was good to hold up the people. Yeah, I think the citizens needed it.
Thank you. All right, I mean, I didn't know quite everything, but for whatever, really, being in the company. You know, actually, really important, if everything just comes down to one basic, you know, like, mental health is the biggest issue, you know, and funding. Out of everything, a lot of people try to figure, you know, take somebody and put them there, and the whole process, you know, that was pretty good, you know? And how much it actually costs, a lot of, that, that period is pretty hopeless, you know, and then they start to think that they're worth it.
Um, one of the, well, I really loved the opportunity to get to work with the staff and learn a lot of things about the police department, that our citizens are looking to learn, and I think John was probably. We did, you know, we came to council, kind of got approval, consensus from everyone, what our topics would be, and we really tried to stick with the topics. And then we met probably three or four times with staff, and just the, learning all the stuff about the police department, and what our officers do day to day, really, for me, is very valuable. The biggest thing I take from the town hall was that everything that Oak Ridge is experiencing is absolutely not unique to Oak Ridge. It is the same thing that all the other communities, and really, the nation is facing, and that it comes down to funding, but mental health, and drugs, and all those things. So, I really hope the community comes back with, with that understanding that Oak Ridge is not in this weird bubble, that it only went in, that really everybody is facing this same challenge. And I did have an opportunity to talk to LEOs from other agencies, and they reiterated this. And then as far as the format, there was a little things that went off, not correctly, you know, in the beginning. We, it was intended for Judge McShane to kind of introduce himself and go along, but he went, yeah, he went into his entire spiel, and it was like dawn, and I was like, you should just go with this. So, you know, and I could have maybe worded things differently, maybe differently, so that he didn't get that impression. But I think that the, I mean, Dawn was really great, she came up with a template, and we tweaked that, the whole bar, our whole group did. And so, I think the next town hall, we can kind of use that format and grow it and change it as it goes. But I definitely think quarterly town halls is huge.
So, with the council, do you, you all agree that quarterly town halls is something you would like to have tickets?
Absolutely.
We've had it pretty much every four months, every four months.
Quarterly, three, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
And there's no one, so if we could do it every four months, it would be great.
And I mean, without taking to account budget, if you guys didn't, you didn't, you know, you didn't rely on?
We did, we did. Other than copies, and I just got, got a note on it quickly, and nothing else. Oh, yeah, that was like twenty years ago.
And Kurt did some, he did some for free, and he said he would do it for you, and I mean, it's a cost, you know, that staff put a lot of work into, too. You think about the time, there's a lot of hours, and not just us meeting, but staffs going back. And James did a lot of work on staffs, and Michael put together, and Chief, and I mean, it was, there was a lot of work put into behind the scenes there.
That might have been schools that do that.
Yeah, that's great.
Absolutely. I don't write them, write them, I don't, I don't do that.
Absolutely. Actually, Chris and I have already talked about that, and it means for everyone that's working at the school, unless you want to.
No, I just, I'm, I'm just having to have them all, but, and not just.
And another thing that Mr. Hadley raised up is the school, we worked with them trying to work some bugs out, and I really think that in the future, that we're kind of growing, moving, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. The one thing I wanted to touch on was that it became very apparent last night that there are a lot of people in our community that are very interested in what's watched. And I would not mind taking on the position of, like, a volunteer coordinator, or something like that, if you want to call it that, and kind of, like, get information to those people that are interested. Get information from Lincoln Sheriff's Department, which, by the way, I spoke to one of them after the meeting, Karen Harper. There have been no changes. The rumor that went out was, it wasn't necessarily a rumor, the information started out as something like this, and then, you know? There's really no changes in how we would have watched work. And she'll, she's happy to share all the information with me or anyone. And then I was thinking, your idea of the four quadrants is awesome, maybe I could reach out to all those people and see if they're ready for who wants to make this, you know, section or new section, or whatever.
So, the town floor, I would suggest that, is that what we do, is if you want to do that, and you're volunteering, that's great, because I guess, this is a public safety committee, and you need to work with them. Because they're charged also to go through that.
That's something we did discuss.
I, I figured to my, so I would like it to go through that committee, I think, to keep our, keep our minds, but that doesn't, in any way, we have someone volunteering to do that, and not, we look at it for.
I, I'm not saying that I have to do it, I just am willing to do it.
That's good. As am I, that's something I have a big interest, but let's get it, stick up. So, Dawn, if you would like to share some of the information that you received with that, with that committee, please, committee, and then that'll get us kicked started, and. And then we can go from there. So, we're going to have committee reports in a bit.
That's what we did at the question, we, we did. Yes.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, everybody, that's all.
One more thing I want to say that we did on the survey, got a lot of extra feedback from the community that one was really threatening to rate the town hall. But we intend to kind of get that together and bring it to council.
I will say how they've had several people who've done what surveys, because they don't, they don't use, or they don't use, I guess, but.
So, did the survey get posted on the city website? I don't know.
So, they don't use their, it's probably.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's something to think about, maybe a way that we can prove that, the, the other section of the community.
How many people submitted? I think it was 220.
That's great.
That would really be expensive, would we put it in the paper, or do we put it in the water bill?
Yeah, actually, you know, if we're going to do this on a regular basis, and that doesn't, the survey will go out on each one, but when it's appropriate, it's definitely something we can prove in the water bill, recognizing all, but that doesn't hit anybody either. But it is an attempt to reach out to those that maybe aren't on here, so keep that in mind if you go for. Okay. Well, good, thank you. Let's move on, is there any other business partners we have, that needs to be discussed? Okay, so, Mrs. City Administrator, 11.1, Administrator, that's perfect.
Are you going to do consent agenda?
Oh, I'm just going to skip the consent agenda. Yeah, we're going to do the consent agenda. The consent agenda is 11.1, approval of three internal evaluation process, and your motion?
I will be approving consent agenda. Second.
Paul Gole, please.
Councilor Forkum?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Councilor Kenyon?
Aye.
Councilor Hadley?
Aye.
Councilor Hollis?
Aye.
Councilor Maxwell?
Aye.
That had to, thank you. And so, let's go to 11.1, having a service.
We're still wrapping up the final pieces of the audit with SBA, so during our daily communication between the two, but for the first time in a couple, three years, I think, we'll have it done on time. So, it may not be the most long audit, feeling the past year, but we will have it done on time.
Good work.
And I think that three months of it, there will be some delicious in the audit there, and there's some comments probably in the audit. File it on time. I'll shoot for protection next year.
Well, expected.
And then, so people in the service first?
I don't have anything else. I'll wait for the boards of committees to come back.
Okay, that's good. And, um, why do you want to start first?
I didn't get a report done because I was in the woods all day long today. I came out of service to a pursuit, so myself, the other Oak Ridge officer, the deputy were in pursuit that ended up kind of northeast of Cudgrove. So it was an hour and a half long, twenty miles an hour pursuit, so. And actually, we have a coast guard helicopter that should be here about now too, suspect. Unfortunately, a toddler is in the woods. We have a coast guard helicopter, we've had two planes left most of the day. With a assault in the county, near Rock Road and Officer Clumby just found the car turning on the street where that person was going to do something else and then from there it went out, up, for service and out in the woods, so. James went out there all day and rotated out and now we'll take, there's a lot of people rotate, so I mean, we can go back to that, I don't know yet, so. Hopefully, the coast guard helicopter will do some help there, so.
If you're coherent enough to tell, so there's that Washington DC.
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah. So I got picked by the chiefs of police associations to go to Washington DC to talk to our legislators about, from the coalition of against bigger trucks. And at first, I didn't even know what I was going to have to talk to, but I did a lot of studying and got briefed a lot. And what it was about basically is FedEx, UPS, and Amazon want bigger, heavier trucks on all the roads, just for their business practices. And the chiefs of police, both chiefs of police associations I belong to, the state, the state of Oregon and the international association of chiefs of police are against it. Most, all the police, all fifty states, the police organizations are against it basically for safety reasons. They want to, typically in Oregon right now, our trucks weigh eighty thousand pounds. They want to go up to ninety-one thousand, in some cases up to a hundred and some thousand pounds for the trucks. And then they want to make double trucks five feet longer in each trailer, which for layman's terms would take twenty-two feet longer for them to stop in most conditions and they want, they want longer, heavier single trailers too. Oregon, we can have heavier trucks in Oregon under the law now, but it's a permit process where if you see triple trucks, it's because they went to fill out a permit and the ODOT tells them you can go here, you can do this if you're going, if you're going to the flag over there and there's a bridge there that won't take the way, you have to go around this way. But if they, if the, if the metal government passes the law, they can just go on any road wherever they want. So that's why most people are against it. I got to meet with elite staff from all of our legislators, both from the House and Senate. I met with DeFazio personally and Merkley personally, which was really cool because they had to represent Oak Ridge and they both, they both actually made time to talk to me, which is cool. And DeFazio left to vote and talk to me, so that was really good, so. It was a long trip. I flew in Sunday, kind of had training and met with the lobbyists on, flew in Sunday, met with the lobbyists on Monday, was at the Capitol all day Tuesday and then flew home Wednesday. And then flew home just in time to go to, so it was kind of a fast trip. I learned a lot as far as, it's scary to me that I didn't realize that twenty-five year olds in our country, because that's who the staff people are, all the congressmen and senators, and they're the bosses. So that was very, very interesting and I didn't know and I don't think the average American person knows that either.
Right.
There you go. So I would, please, that you may, thank you so much for doing that, representing Oak Ridge and following the interest of, of police chiefs and organizations you represent. May I ask, did Oak Ridge pay for this or did it?
Actually, the coalition against bigger trucks paid for it.
Wonderful.
I did spend some of city money and some of my money, but it's all in labor by the coalition for bigger trucks.
Excellent. Thank you, chief. Appreciate that. I remember some services?
I have a, I didn't have forms for you, but I quick stats. We had five hundred and forty calls in October that resulted in twenty-one case reports. We had fall fun night, there was a couple other things, I just didn't have time to get it all together. Even though it should be over the October, or the November report, it was really cool. We went to the police officers association dinner where the department got an award for snowpocalypse thing. We were nominated and awarded that, Cudgrove, Key, County, a couple of the counties that assisted. And Officer Clumby got a medal of honor, which is one of the highest awarding, awarding from our organization, so we should say thanks to Officer Clumby. It was a cool thing, I think. There's only a couple hours since we got that medal of honor award, that's there.
This is a licensing award, that's that?
No, medal of honor. They upgraded it from a licensing.
They have some licensing award?
Yeah.
So, on your call.
Okay.
That's it. So let's move to reports for the lawyers, community committees. Um, we need to know how to report. Adam in committee?
Yeah, I'll just report really quick. So on that consent agenda, we just passed the annual report and internal committee evaluation process. So if you're a, on a committee, you know, you can expect that to be coming out in the coming days or weeks. And then also, as a committee, we're starting to work on our annual report process. We kind of had a little of a head start on that just because we knew it was coming down the pipeline, so we actually do pretty much have that at this point. So if any of you guys need help with like a template or anything, more than that, we can forward it to them.
Thanks, Captain Maxwell. The audit committee kind of met, but they will meet once the project is done to review it and then help translate it to council. Budget committee? Do you have any services committees?
Counselor, we didn't report on that last meeting and we haven't met since then.
Okay. Library is definitely also, she reported last night. ODOT?
I'm working on a couple of problems. Rules of engagement is supposed to be coming to the council shortly. But also, I brought to the committee, I have a citizen approach me about getting together some preschool services here in Oak Ridge, we're really lacking that. I brought that up to the economic development committee, how their feelings would be on kind of supporting that. And we talked, discussed it, discussed partnering with different organizations and then possibly kind of creating a subcommittee of ODOT and a subcommittee of Parks and Rec.
Community services?
Community services, I'm sorry. So we're going to kind of grab some, some heads and put some heads together and try to accomplish something with the school and, yeah, and try to figure out something. Because there is currently a waiting list of over twenty, just to get a head start in Oak Ridge and it's kind of a problem for, for not only the people that live here, but the people that are looking to live here. We don't have a preschool for your kids. It's kind of a deterrent to this at Oak Ridge if you know that it's not there. And the Forest Service is one that spoke up about that. They looked into that and there's, and actually, Serp, Ultimus have brought this up, so I kind of dug into that a little and there's actually, yeah, that's quite a big problem for the Forest Service, because there's not the school services for kids. So that is one of the problems I brought up to the group. And I actually did want to kind of bring up to council that I think that the way that ODOT went, I think it would be really good if council had maybe kind of directed projects that way or cases that they want the groups to work on as far as economic development goals.
I like having that too, of what you're saying. I think daycare in general is lacking, and that's pretty cool. But that's also where that annual report is going to come in. I'm really excited to see how everything flushes out. You know, the chair, hopefully, will convene everybody and talk through what they want their goals to be and what those objectives look like. And then that will come back to council as the council, this day. Okay, where you really want to. That's coming, hopefully.
No, I just want to comment on that here and I really appreciate that you brought that, because that's really important, economic development. And I have a question that we know that I talked to Gina Land, or when we have the funds, it's something that we need to, that, that, I should continue that, um, in order to do that also. As far as giving ODOT direction, I definitely agree that there is some direction. We need to remember that as council, as the leadership, things that come up, issues that come up, whether it becomes really simple or out of our heads, if we realize this is an issue, that, that we want to direct this back to, so that they can work on it, um, if we can talk to them.
Thank you for adding that. I think that not only ODOT committee, but like all the committees would direct those things. But one more little thing, this just came up last night, but it kind of is very similar to the preschool thing. I have someone from the audience come up to me that lives in Oak Ridge, that works for a company very similar to Boots, and the company that she works for really wants to put a location in Oak Ridge. She asked me if I would help get partners together for that as well, and I was like, oh my gosh, yes, I'd love to do that.
Well, we go.
Yeah, so, so that might be another party kind of thing. Maybe I was thinking, you know, come up from the police, the fire, the clinic, I actually, yeah, I know. Well, I'm thinking of a, kind of an ODOT thing, because it's also an economic, well, it's a creative job.
So is this a company that you exist in? Or one she wants for?
Nope, it's, it has three locations by, the data, there's one, one of us.
And so what kind of, do you, do you think she wants?
So they, they do similar stuff like Boots, they work for the, they do the mental health side of it. And I have actually been talking to a couple people that are working clinics here already.
Okay. And so why, what is it that she needs help with?
She needs help with a place, number one. So that's, that location and, you know, the business aspect side of it is really what they need help with. The desire is already there, they already have a little bit of funding, considering the business is already established, so. So I had thought that it could be kind of a little bit of maybe public safety and a little bit of the economic development side of it, but I didn't have a job.
And I, I think that's true. I think we need to be careful because with the business, and at the council, we adjust a lot, individual businesses and different businesses in, in some ways we do, in some ways we don't. So I just, I would suggest you, if you're able to, sit down with the C A and run through that, so that we can make sure we know what mine is, what's the one, but I'm not trying to have that, that's really great.
It is, it's a really much needed resource.
Absolutely, it is. It's a really much needed resource. Planning commission, I think we had a handout coming in front of us.
Yes, you do, you should have a handout in front of you. So for the second, third quarter of twenty nineteen, the planning commission completed the following, so April, the meeting was canceled. And in May, we approved variance for a rear yard setback. In June, we had a work session on the LID and in July, we had a work session on the LID.
What's the LID?
That is the low impact development code and I do have a blurb on that, I'd be happy to get to in just a second. So during, July, we worked on the LID. And then August, there was a temporary use permit and a conditional use permit issued by the planning commission and again, work session on the LID. And in September, we had another, approved another rear yard setback. So the LID, what that stands for is low impact development and these are code amendments that were recommended from the U of O in regards to our stormwater management plan and these are things that will help improve the stormwater management because, because everything lands on the street ends up in the river. So it's hopefully to help improve the water quality that is reaching the rivers from the city of Oak Ridge, so.
Is this use of the acronym, acronym of the LID the same as the words that are in the budget?
No, they're not.
Okay.
No, those are, that's a different, that's a different LID. Local improvement districts, thank you. And, and those are where citizens will chip in on a local improvement.
Local.
That, that is correct, yes. So no, while it is the same, looks like the same acronym, but it's not.
Okay.
And the, the LID has been something that's kind of been hanging over for years. It was originally viewed in twenty thirteen. We brought it up in front of, brought it up in front of planning commission again with the intent of just introducing it to them so that they knew what was coming out of their department and they decided to dive back into it. So we did. And from this stage, once we, next step for us will be a public hearing and from that public hearing will be either a recommendation to approve or not approve. And then because the code amendment changes, that recommendation will reach you guys for another public hearing to either approve or not approve of the recommended changes, so.
I just have a couple comments. Do you want to go for the first?
Um, I have a couple questions. What you were just referring to is the public hearing step, that's not in relation at all to the T S D?
It is not, no, it's clearly separate from T S D.
Okay. And then my other question was, is the, the bank commission is something that council is not really interested in?
We are encouraged not to. John?
And, and in those regards, if you notice, I stopped in September because I try to leave it at least no less than a thirty, thirty day gap between reporting in any of the meetings in the event that there is a, an appeal, so.
So if there is an appeal to something, it would come to council. And if we had a tender to sign from Shenanah or it was just that, or rather, then we'd be at that point of communication and we'd not be able to vote on it, and just get in a conversation. But that's why we, that we actually are the, are the, for, for the planning commission. So what I wanted to bring up was the conditional use permit. And I don't know exactly the way to go about it, it's not so common, but I have some concerns about making sure that the templates that we use for our conditional use permits also have built into them a review to make sure that the conditional use that they have been permitted for is actually being met. And I don't know whether that's something that we can direct the administrator to, to review those templates to make sure that's part of any new conditional use permit that is set out and/or that's not getting one of these. The reason I bring this up is that, you know, we have conditional use permits for marijuana or marijuana grows and whatever it is that we have. And, and built within them, I believe we should have the, the people back on a yearly basis and make sure that they are complying with conditional use permit. If that's not written into the conditional use permit, then I don't know that we have the right to do that, but I think we definitely need to do that since it is a condition. And once that, if that condition is not being met, then if you can vote for question.
And when you use the word we in all of that, are you referring to council or to planning commission?
Council.
So why wouldn't it be the planning commission with the issue that permits to follow on the dramatic?
So we're just mixing, mixing words here. It would be up to the police department to, to review that or the code enforcement to go back to it. What I would like us to do is determine whether or not that's just something I can direct, we can direct the administrator to make sure it's happening, or I don't think we can direct the planning commission directly to do that.
No, and I would not recommend that is not a planning commission function. I mean, once they approve the conditional use permit.
No, I mean, to, to make sure that language is in all the.
Oh, copy, yes, yes, yeah, that definitely could be, that is planning commission, yes, wouldn't. So the, the conditions of the conditional use permit could easily be one of those, absolutely. We will, we will.
So what is, council, I would suggest and ask council to have a discussion, that we direct the planning commission to make sure that that is in the conditional use permit.
Over.
Council.
I would like to say something about that and I agree with you because just like marijuana that's, that's supposed to be fully fenced and actually has been put in there. And if that isn't in there, why hasn't it been fenced? Because I was in the meeting and it was supposed to be fully fenced and it's done today.
So that's a good example of what I'm.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's why it needs to be in there.
You know, and not just that.
Yeah, I was just saying, that's one in particular that I know.
So then is it the planning commission's job to change, to amend that conditional use permit or is that the council?
And that's the question, for, you know, form.
Well, amend the condition of, of the conditional permit if, if they find it is governmental to communities' welfare, they have the right to.
And what I'm asking though, is they're not a template that we use for conditional use permit and then we, we, we tweak it for the specific condition that is being used, that we're using it for. And if indeed there is a template, I want to make sure that there is a section in that template that talks about being able to go again on a, on a, on a reasonable basis to, to check on whether or not that use is correct.
Yeah, so.
So I'm asking about process here. And is that something we direct planning commission to do? Is that something we ask us to the administrator to make sure that the planning commission does on that? And then how do we make sure it goes through? So that's my question.
So in regards to the templates, there is no, the best example of a template is, is in the form of a staff report that hits all the areas in the zoning ordinance that is affected by that application. So it's a comparison of the application to the land use and then that is turned into a staff report.
It seems to me that council has approved conditional use permit.
Once, yes. There was one that was denied by the planning commission about two years ago and then ended up going to council.
I see what you're saying. Yes, you're right, that was an appeal to us that I saw.
Yes, that is correct.
I'm wondering if it isn't something that, what you're asking is something that we could ask either the attorney and/or have asked our staff to verify that all of our processes or that process in the planning commission matches state codes, because I know that state code has a whole kind of, of steps on planning mission, you know, guidelines and. You know, guidelines and rules and all that. Maybe ask to have our process compared to ours, to be a rematch?
And I'm not sure if, and it very well may be or or, I don't know. But I do want to make sure that when we issue any conditional, conditional use permit, that that occurs. So if we have a consensus with council about asking the city administrator to determine, determine how to, how to make this happen and come back to us and let us know how that is going to happen.
I mean, I do have a comment, um, I think that we should be careful in excluding one type of business and refer to all conditional use permits.
We are concerned with all conditional use permits. Not one type or one other. So it just happens we use an example, and it was both marijuana, so, um, but that's just an example.
So just for an example, the ones, the other ones would be affected, um, all gas stations, all churches.
I think, right. Any conditional use permit, I think that covers it. Um, so council, probably a consensus, ask the city administrator to know if they do that, and how that happens, if they're in fact. Right on, thanks for coming. Thank you.
Got it right, Paul.
Yes. Public safety and I agree to me, Paul, you're on.
Yes, I'm glad we just got started, so we're not really getting quite the ball over. But we did discover something that most of the committees have seven voting members. And as in states, right now, there's only five of them on the committee.
Will you ask the council to have eight on the state?
Yes. Who's next?
December.
December, yes. And we want to change it so there's seven plus two city council members on this committee at all times. That, that should be part of the coverage.
Seven included.
Yes.
And this, we, I was just gonna ask, is there a, a spot for a person, for persons that are not in, are the limits in that, written into it?
Yes.
Not mandatory, they are allowed to be, to apply for that.
They're allowed, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's three of them outside, two of them would be outside of.
Okay.
What do you mean, there's going to be other people for two more spots?
No.
Okay.
No, we're, we're gonna keep them because of land.
The way they've just changed the, so does it have seven already?
Yes. No, we have five voting members.
Five citizen members.
Yeah, five citizen members that are voting.
So you want the two counselors to be able to vote?
Yes. Which makes it total of seven, because all other committees have some.
And you have voting members, meaning the counselors are not voting members?
They're not. But it, it states in this one here too, where the chairperson, which is a council member, can't vote. Right now it states it's five voting members, because there's a tie. The, the chairperson can't count.
I think that's, and I think I know just where you're going at. Um, in all the acts, the councilors don't vote, neither do I. I don't, I don't bother with it. But in the other committees, councilors vote.
Yes.
Yeah, and I've actually brought this up before. I really think that our committees need to have more consistency. And this exact thought you're talking about, I would like to forward this on to the admin committee to look at all the committees and have more consistency in, in the voting members and how many, and who's the chair and all those things. Cause that, that was one of the questions. Did I ask something else?
Um, well, this hits right onto that. So uh, like I said, we developed our, our annual report and lay our goals and having, um, looking into our committees more just to finish off the goal that we've kind of already been delving in. Um, we'll be looking at all of the, the committee resolutions and ordinances and seeing what the differences, differences are. So that is, that is on our agenda. Of course, that has to come to you guys for approval, but I imagine we'll go.
And there's only four, should we hold off on this and wait, or?
Oh, I agree, it's what you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's something, it's pretty common.
If you feel like it's unofficial, but we are gonna have to go back and look at it anyway. I feel like there would be um any urgency to that shift, or do you feel like it's a wait some other time?
It's just a matter, cause, well, I don't have a copy of the thing, and I wonder where it's from. I think it's six, because there's five, and then that the chairperson is only voting for the five. And for this vote, don't even count. You know, and you can't have five people plus the chairperson voting too, which is asking six people. It's just, it's, they just need to be voted and kicked.
My one thought is, you know, why do you want two counselors on there?
Not only two, but we're trying to get seven voting members.
So that's what you're aiming at, just giving to, to the full seven voting members.
Yes.
And currently, you're, the resolution states that, that the chair doesn't vote.
Yes. If, if he does vote, it's, it's.
And so you've interpreted that as council can't vote, however, I don't think that's true.
Chair can vote, the only thing it says is that if it's high and a, and a chair has voted, then it's denied, that motion doesn't pass.
That's incorrect.
Exactly.
I'm presenting, I'm not.
Yeah, why, why should chair then vote if it's not gonna pass?
Okay, so, so I guess, you know, here, I don't want, I, I am concerned, I don't want our committee to all get logged down on, on the processes and all that and then prevent from going forward. That we've started some great work, but I want you to move forward and I want to see if we can have a review of that stuff.
Yeah.
And that's why we have an admin committee to be able to look at it. And I think, let's say, let's.
When you just forward it to admin committee, let them?
Let them look at it and then come back with some recommendations with conjunction with what the two of you think is best for your committee.
Yeah. Our next meeting is uh, November twelfth, uh, twelve, at six o'clock.
I believe, I believe this is intense, so, um, that's gonna be a tight turnaround, but that, I think, I believe that is our, our next priority is looking at.
Okay, so, so admin committee, when you look at, when you look at that first and give them some recommendations to how they can accomplish what they think they need. And you prefer to have seven voting members?
Yeah. All, all of the other committees have, you know, that.
I'm not asking about the others, I'm asking about what you want.
Yeah.
Do you want seven voting members?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Would you like to continue with your report call?
Okay, that's, that's what the biggest thing was. And then we, we wanted something about a, a R F P about the city vehicle maintenance thing, and I've talked to the end of Brian. And the, the public works are uses age mechanic, so we're gonna, we're just gonna try to incorporate that mechanic into all of which.
They were using two mechanics, and one of them, we come to town and fit, work on the fire department vehicles. We had one, public workers, which shuttle their vehicles to Eugene, you know, mechanic, who does a very cheap labor and good work. And my thought is, why don't we silence this, let's all city vehicles, because the mechanic's all might work on, and take them all up there, take it to their level and have it work on, and save some money instead of having that come out. It would take a long time and would trip, would charge, and it would be.
So let me, let me, so suggestion is, is that we have all the maintenance on vehicles done here in Oak Ridge?
Yeah.
Okay. What is?
Have it done by a single mechanic that we actually shuttle up, we shuttle the vehicles up to Eugene if they're, if they're driving. Uh, and instead of having just public workers take them up there, we want all departments to use this mechanic.
Outside of, okay.
Yeah, just because it's cheaper to take them up there, get it worked on, it's a good mechanic, and we don't pay the extra fee for the mechanic to come to town and work on our department vehicles.
So I, I, I'm not sure why we would do that. And my thinking is, I, I get that, I mean, that we would just choose the cheapest thing, but why would we want to do an R F P that way?
No, I, I would, I asked, uh, council board to actually not go down the road and R F P the committee if we have.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Let me try that plan for a while, and see if it works.
Go ahead and finish the rest of the report, and it will tell you what, what you did.
Okay.
Get our report.
Go ahead.
Our report, reading, uh, what, and why that came to us.
Yes.
Yeah, because a lot of, okay. After one of our, each one of the departments, which we had Officer Davidson in, um.
Paul.
Paul. We asked every, um, one of us, was about the, the homeless list, which they, we already covered that with that, with that meeting we had, our federal mental health issue. It's one of, you know, it turns everything.
And then, what, what we did, what we did in the meeting is we asked Mr. Paul, we asked the chief of police or the police officer that was there, what do they need from the safety committee? And this is what came back to us, and that they would like the vehicles worked on, you know, and this is what came back to us. And that's why this was all brought forward. And this is what they wanted, what the police would like, you know, with the.
I'm not, I'm, I'm sorry.
For safety, for vehicle, you know.
They want to have a regular safety maintenance system, Jeff? Is that what I mean?
Yep.
Okay.
Because, as Scott, it really explains.
Christie, if you can just enlighten.
Yeah, so I think that's what, what they're talking about, is we have all the city vehicles go every which way to get worked on. It would be really fantastic if we had a central location where all the city vehicles could get worked on. And in my opinion, in the future, it'd be really awesome if the city had a hired person that did this. Well, unfortunately, I know for as far as fire wise, you have to be cert, a lot of certifications to be testing a pump, to be testing ladder. That's, fire engine especially, it's a lot of levels, that type of mechanic to do. Whereas a police car, it might be a little different. But there might be other vehicles we have. So what I think I'm interpreting is that you guys could have discussed having one central location, set of vehicles going there, people coming there, right?
When you say one central location, you mean one central mechanic?
Yeah.
That's why we want what you're saying.
Shop. Yeah.
And one, you need one shop.
That was my proposal, their proposal was that R F P and find this mechanic. And what I want to do is use this great mechanic that Robert uses up in Eugene for all of our vehicles.
Scott, what do you think?
I didn't answer a little bit. So the original um issue is that in the fire department, we have a contract mechanic that we use on a regular basis. He'll come, he uh has a company that travels around all over the state and works on uh fire vehicles. Well, the issue is that we'll have a mechanical problem come up and we submit those to him. And it sometimes takes him two months before he can come to Oak Ridge and work on our vehicles. And we have a lot of little repair things that fall through the cracks and go for long periods of time without being repaired. And this becoming a bigger issue all the time, our fleet is, is deteriorating and it's not being worked on in a timely manner. So that's why it was brought up.
Okay, and you feel that this is a solution to that?
We, and what we actually talked about was um maybe contracting with a mechanic that's more local, that could come to Oak Ridge and, and on a more regular basis and work on um vehicles citywide. That was kind of what they're discussing.
Sorry, I.
I didn't get that either. Um, so, that makes, that makes sense. So my, my next question is, why is this a council decision? I mean, you have. Okay, so you're not really asking first to decide, you're just saying, this is what we talked about, and this is how we're going to save the city money. Excellent.
And public safety.
And public safety.
Having, working with the community.
Excellent recommendation.
Took me a second, I was like, oh, this is really.
Awesome, that's great, well, you're Catholic on this, you have wonderful.
Without vehicle, there's no reason there.
Yes. Do you have any more?
No, that should be the other than, the name of that.
Vice chair down there.
Except that when we talked about the police and doing service outside.
Oh, oh, yeah. Outside of, um, I don't have my notes. I got them? Oh, you know, I'm in it.
I'm gonna send you two messages, you know that. I remember that.
Oh, yeah, I would.
If, uh, if he had somebody that was dangerous out there and had a gun, our city can't go out there. We can't go there. We couldn't, if he had to go I Prairie, like Hazeldale, and there was somebody threatening him with a gun, he can't go there.
Oh, you need police backup in order to go into a safe situation, you would have to wait for.
Scott, our, 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 it's for the fire department, or the annual.
And we did have an incident, it's been uh, about a year ago, that we had a gentleman that was having a, a mental issue. We got called to the scene and we had to go and stage away, it's away from the house. Well, our local police might quick to respond, and we had to wait two hours for the sheriff to respond to that area. But there have been other instances where um we've had things that were more um urgent for us to get to. Um, but, you know, because our local police, you know, their, our taxpayers pay for their services and outside of the city limits is not, they're not paid to go outside the city limits.
So Chief, when you back up the sheriff, the sheriff has to be there first in order for you to back them up? Or can you go in because they're on their way?
It depends.
Is this an issue that you think we need to look at?
Yes, this is an issue.
Okay.
Typically, they don't respond, so, and they, they call, they call us to respond, but then we're doing stuff in the county that's, we're imposing liability in ourselves. It's not ours, because we, we wouldn't, they, some, so when some assets, we don't get dispatched, we go there, then we're incurring liability that would be unnecessary. Uh, if they, kind of what I'd like them to do is their sergeants to call and say, hey, we want you to respond, because they don't do that very often.
Is that an issue of your liability?
Some, yeah.
Okay.
But there's, there's some like routine stuff, they just, they don't go, so they.
So this is an issue that is ongoing, that public safety is aware of, and are you working toward a solution?
Well, I do, I've talked to other chiefs, and most other chiefs have come to the point where they're like, there's the line, we don't go past the line, so.
The city, I understand what he's saying, the city cannot go there, we can't pay you, well, the hierarchy, your jurisdiction is the city limits, so Chris. So we're, I mean, people out there are paying their taxes for the sheriff, and we pay for our city support here. That's where the difference is. And we asked that we could get, like I did, I asked, could we get the state police to go out there, and it isn't, it's the sheriff.
So I look at this as a safety issue for our own employees, and I'm wondering, can council direct city staff to work at maybe changing ordinances or whatever? Because really, what the fire department needs is training their police to be able to help with them and protect them so that they can do their job. That's what I'm.
And, and, and just, just to be blunt about it, politically speaking, if the council says yes, go help the fire department. But then something happens with Oak Ridge, then it's on you guys, it's not on the police department. So that's, it, it, it's my opinion that would be the best thing all around, if you guys say.
I don't think so.
Well, but, but, but if you're directing, if you're directing us to say, in the case of the fire department, please respond. But then, you gotta remember though, if we go there to help them, we're stuck there.
Yes, you are.
So you can't leave. There could be a murder going on at Oak Ridge, but if there's a felony call going on there, they're stuck there.
So this sounds like something that you have to have discussions about and trying to figure out how to do it.
Going on for years.
Is it, and?
Since the first day.
I know the problem has been going on for years, but are you actively pursuing a solution?
We do at times, at this point in time, no, we're not.
No, okay, so the answer is no. Counselor?
Um, well, I appreciate all of this information. I don't think that it's necessary for us to have another safety committee meeting during our city council meeting, and it sounds like this is turning into. Usually, councillors report on their committees by, you know, reading a brief summary of statement about what's covered and then they go back to their committees and they finish whatever projects they're working on, still think we're getting way up past our council. Um, which I, I don't mean to be a butt, but saying that, but.
I appreciate it.
No, no, I, I don't, I don't disagree, but what it's brought to us is that there, that there is an issue there. So this is something that the safety committee, you have a council completely lived and you're still working on. Okay, so work away. That sounds excellent.
Okay, so I'll ask the commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I often don't get to finish my thought, and when I'm cut off, I lose my thought and I, I struggle with that. So, um, earlier, I got cut off, and I wanted to note that when we were talking about voting in committees, the committees actually make recommendations to the council. So I don't know where my whole thought process was gonna go on that, I didn't give it all that you down, but um, I don't remember now, that was twenty minutes ago. Anyway, I think maybe there's some standards for how committee processes are. And we probably need to be reviewing every committee I have so. And then I had another question was, how often, is it annually that we actually, um, I should say, the mayor actually points seats on committees? Okay, I'm curious, because I, I have.
One, we need to point.
So I'll wait until whenever that happens, but, thank you for letting me speak, I'm done now.
Okay, thank you.
I took a turn.
I'm sorry, what?
So I'll take a turn.
Okay, what I meant, what I meant was, I am not a councillor appointed to a committee at present.
Oh, okay, that's true. Your new councillor?
Okay, we've seen, I don't know if we have anything to report at this time, we talked about that. Um, that we came up, we're currently on the committee agenda, um, let's go to sixteen point one. Appointing the mayor of the city to our high management committee. I have to say, I'm not sure that I was going to be appointed to it, but I think you need to be aware of that attending it. Um, this is a committee that was formed a few years, a couple years ago. I attended, um, and we're in the process of seeking to offer high, like, we authorize, it'll probably continue for another year, I would think, until it gets completely authorized.
Where is this by?
On after Heidi?
Is it in Eugene or is it in here locally?
Like, after Heidi.
After Heidi.
Yeah, after Heidi, um, from what's her older, that's, that's been a quite a. Anyway, so, uh, sixteen point one.
Eighty-five concessions, Chris?
Okay, I'm tired of it.
Eighty, eighty-five, eighty-five.
Oh, eighty-five, amazing, Brett. Excellent, that's a. Okay. So can I have a motion? Go ahead, Ron.
I move that we approve the assignment of miracles to the after Heidi drives in a factory committee.
And for the session, question, offer vote.
Councillor Howard?
Hi.
Councillor Volcom?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Councillor Maxwell?
Aye.
Councillor Halloway?
Aye.
And that has been, thank you. And let's go to sixteen point two, appointing to the audit committee.
Yes, uh, this is still the one vacant position in the audit committee. Looking for a motion from the floor to appoint the applicant to that position if they agree. Uh, the exhibit submitted application. Uh, and these appointments have to come from a budget committee member affiliated with making audit, uh, audit committee seat. Not posted in normal occasions due to evolution twenty dash twenty twelve, so the audit committee members, they'll be in there by the end of the day. If this went back and your options are to appoint or not, want the applicant to fill out the seat.
Okay, um, so, Melissa, have you? Yes, you're there, I see you behind the camera. Would you like to stand in front of your camera while you do this? And you tell us why you would like to be on the audit committee.
I'm being, I'm a running budget committee member, I feel like it's a natural continuation of being a budget committee member. And I'm committed to it, I've been spending trainings, I'm going more. Just like you, of course.
Councillor, do you have any questions to her?
Hi, I'm Kathy, um, I'm councillor on the audit committee and I've been to a couple budgetary trainings with Melissa and I've seen her dedication and eagerness to learn how the municipal budgeting works. So I would love to have her on the audit committee. Um, let's bring some good stuff with me.
I just have a comment, I really like your email address.
Okay. Councillor Kenyon?
I move that we appoint Melissa Jonathan to serve in a vacant audit menu condition for two years term.
Second in place. Offered a motion.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Councillor Howard?
Aye.
Councillor Volcom?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Councillor Halloway?
Aye.
Councillor Maxwell?
Aye.
That's Halloway, and welcome, and thank you, it was a very, you know, wonderful show.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we are going to move out of our regular workshop, uh, regular session and to do.
Can I bring a former teammate out of the committee? Um, because Dawn brought up that she is not on the committees. And the last time we talked about audit committees, you said that you were considering leaving the audit committee and discussing whether it's end of the council meeting.
Right.
So.
Right, you're asking me to move.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, pretty much. I think this would be a good time to discuss that, where we have a lot of things on the plate. And, um, you know, you know, Dawn is very interested in it. So, um, you would mention that we would have that discussion with all of them.
Okay, um, so if, I, I currently do not have a committee that I share. Um, all of the doctors that committee, I can share. And, um, yes, while I do share my other outside committees, I would like to continue on the audit committee. The audit committee is one of the good functions, is being able to transfer the information that we see into a, a clearer and understanding, um, narrative as well as document through the council. Um, I've been on the council for two years and I have a very good handle on, on the processes and how to interpret that. Um, so I'm choosing to stay on that, um, I would then appoint, um, and run off to it. Yeah, um, that's it. We're going to move into workshop at this time. Um, thank you, audience, for being here. You are welcome to stay for our workshop. Um, we will not take any comment during the workshop. We are going to go over to things once is our commission made for the areas of discussion and also to discuss, um, the short-term rentals. So, um, I, I have been watching too much Steve Spandau. I was about to say, I yield the floor. Anyway, so, if the committee minister would like to proceed with five point one.
Should be brief, um, I, if you recall last session, uh, we looked at this mission statement and kind of made some comments. But I'm kind of full of those in and it's, I'm afraid to go, you describe what you desire. Uh, but now we move on to the vision statement, so vision statement is something that, uh, how would you want to see this community ten, twenty, thirty years from now? And we talked about people providing me some thoughts, uh, via email in between sessions. Uh, didn't get anything, I understand it, but it made it very hard. Um, and so what I've done is I've provided you some slides to kind of prime the pump. To see what you, what to think about as you start coming up with ideas for a vision statement. And a vision statement is what really drives your resourcing going forward with the budget committees you use as they work with the budget. Uh, what you should think about is you establish policy and vision. So, um, I provide these, where we don't have to talk about it, once you're interested in talking about them, but something to take home. Think about, um, if you want to send me a line, a sentence, even an adjective, you can put into the statement. And I'll build the statement and you guys can, if you get a word from something, I know, so. I will develop the statement, invest my ability and you guys can use what you give me. And, uh, and you guys can listen around or however you like, what matches your vision. Any questions on the slides or the way I did with the strategic plan? After this becomes the focus areas where we really start looking at. Uh, if you look at the vision, what, what do you really want to focus on? Because if you focus on everything, you end up focusing on nothing. So you, you want to choose three or four specific areas you think are important to the city. And, uh, from those focus areas, you will find outcomes that you want to see happen. And once you define those outcomes, then you can measure how your, what your targets is towards those outcomes. And that's why, uh, we start with the vision and we go through that.
I've got an adjective for you, um, because this is the vision, I would like to see maybe vibrant or something to that effect.
Right.
So I just wanna, um, just want to speak directly to council for a little bit. This is something that, you know, we need to have a strategic, uh, a strategic plan. We need to have a, a goal, which is important to have the city, you want to do that. Um, we've had, we've been a councillor for a year now and, um, I think it's time to get this, get this done. And as our city administrator said, um, your strategic, strategic plans and your strategic goals and your vision, um, your mission statement should help us, should help guide you in everything that, that we consider. Uh, any, everything that we go to vote for is just pushing forward, um, what the vision is, what our strategic goals are. We start at the top and look at those visions and I know, you know, we all have, have access to the ones that were, um, available in previous years. Um, and, but we start at the top and look at your visions and where you want to be. But then you can, then you can, um, can funnel down into what are the five strategic goals that we as a council would like to, um, accomplish. And then that is a little more, and it's really pretty, but just encouraging to really put some thought in here. Don't, um, don't hesitate to throw anything out as far as what you think would be important. That kind of brainstorming is where we're going to be able to come to a good, uh, a good solid core of what is going to mean up forward. What are we going to be really looking at?
I don't know.
Oh, Jen, Ron.
Uh, vitality, I think anything that says like, you know, you want to say like youthful but energetic and, yeah.
All right, so you're, you know, you're welcome to bounce words off one another and ideas, you know, as you think about this and then send them over to CA and, um.
Last meeting, you had the two slides of, then you had, I think, the old tapes.
Mission statement and the proposed mission statement.
Yeah.
Of course, you guys made some, uh, some edits to that, so I wanted to melt the two together and drop a sentence from the old statement.
Okay.
And so I've done that, so it gets there, again, you'll see it again if we get further.
Gotcha. Councillor Kenyon?
I was just pointing, I don't remember what that one said, so that I can relate it to this.
Okay, I'll, I'll send the slide, I'll send it all out.
Councillor Kenyon?
Um, so the goal that we're working towards is to make a new strategic plan.
To update it.
Uh, and that's why. How long is this strategic plan good for?
Well, I, I think that's up to the council, uh, the last one was good from twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen. I've seen them a lot longer than that. And I'm done with this.
Yeah, I think, the reason why I ask is because I was, the first time I was in a council in twenty fifteen and sixteen, we were working on the strategic plan that started in thirteen and ended in eighteen. So it hadn't even been concluded until like somewhere in between. Well, it wasn't done when I left council and that was June of twenty sixteen. So, um, so, my question is, is there a place, uh, because I feel like it shouldn't take that long?
No, I.
Is there a place where we as councillors can go to learn, you know, like, a website or something that's like, what kinds of things may be a strategic plan and how long does it take?
There's a good website I found, it might be informative, I'll forward you the link at, I don't know, if I, Clearpoint Strategy or something like that, it does a very good job. Uh, and there's a couple cities that have done a very good job publishing their strategic plan and they're, they're pretty good. So, I can forward all that, plus, you know, I'll make these slides available. Uh, but to get back to the point of strategic planning, and the mistake that most people make is they create a strategic plan and it lies on a shelf for five years. So, when I talk about measuring towards outcomes, that mandates that you're actually looking at this strategic plan at some degree. So, and that way, it's the living proof of the thing. And if we change anything, there's nothing wrong with bending a strategic plan that might run, might run out if you want it.
So is your vision to take the one that exists currently and stand on it and or do you have something?
Well, potentially.
Or just start with scratch?
Well, I, what I wanted to do is kind of show you this, like, in this case, step by step, so that's why I'm showing you these old statements. So when we get to those focus areas and everything, I'm gonna show you and list all of ones for since nineteen ninety-one, I think is the last, the oldest one I have. I'll show you all the focus areas that they had and then kind of some of their outcomes. So you have something to see where this town, stop they were going and where they ended up.
Which I think is really important for us to look at our old strategic goals, there must have been really good solid ones.
Yeah.
And did we accomplish them? Did we partially accomplish them? Do they now just seem unn- unnecessary or even more necessary than we were before, you know, and so.
I'm trying to set up some sort of a work site where all this stuff would be available, so.
Is that all that we could do?
You know, what's our complete goal in competition?
My goal would be first quarter of twenty twenty.
I would agree.
I would agree, yeah.
I think it's.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah. I, I only have a work session, but I'd love to just do, you know, four hour, hammer it out, four hour work session, I would just.
Well, I think when we get to the focus area, that I've come to really does need to be a sit-down for four hours.
Yeah. Yeah, it's Saturday thing.
Sure.
Okay, councillor, are you okay with moving on? All right, let's move on to short-term rentals, rentals discussion. Um, if you remember, we brought this up and said that we wanted to try to look at, um, various options. Um, and talk about where, what kind of direction we want to give, um, to do the planning mission, to also look into it and, and, um, what we need in our community. So, to start the conversation off, um, you know, we were, we were concerned about the short-term rentals, which are Air, Airbnb's and also those that go full tour of Airbnb. Um, we learned that Airbnb actually does, we have to, um, we have to pass two ways to the city, um, the lodging pass. They take care of that. Um, so there's some questions about whether or not Airbnb's or other short-term rentals have business levels? Should they have business? And I, I consider a lot of that issues is corporate, the material that you got. And how does it affect our housing market, which is kind of the, the biggest spot that we rule out, so, I was gonna, I was gonna.
Um, did you just say that Airbnb's were due to have, to the city?
Yes, they do.
They were, they would be collecting the taxes when the people actually make the reservation and pay for it.
Right.
Uh, I believe ultimately, we're good, just as any other lodging tax does now, which is the collected by the county.
No.
Actually, Eugene does form a limited accounting and then gets distributed after that they're, they're all.
It's kind of direct payment, less of, it's like all the other, I can have people.
I did take a, no, you go ahead. Um, I was gonna say, I did take, you know, going through this, but I don't know that it's really the direction that I'm supposed to be looking in, but there's a bunch of different questions that kind of popped up, like, I felt like the ORS that was included here was a little bit confusing in that it doesn't define a very often key. And I almost read it as, you know, um, if you own a home and you have like a temporary guest, uh, you know, living with you and somehow they need to play a KTRT on that. Um, I didn't feel like that was very well defined, the LP, the LP, apologies. Our scheme is to be.
So I think before we get too much into the weeds, um, we actually had a knockoff on that, is that, is what we really might want to determine is, is this something in our community that number one, we want, we believe we need for that? Is it detrimental to our community so that we have to look at doing something to it? And, um, you know, and so I think if the council needs to agree, is this something you want to pursue? Is this, how, how, how is this affecting our rental situation or is it? I mean, there is a, there are both sides of that question.
Yeah, and some people go, like, or they go on a close-up like maintenance, or they rent like by the week and stuff like this. People actually pay taxes for that.
It depends on what method they rented, if it's a VRBO or Airbnb or they do it on their own, because it's not furnished.
Yeah.
Or, you know, they just do it with friends and family or whatever, it just all deserves a providing.
We need to figure out what we want. Or what we want.
Councillor Kenyon, have your hand up.
Well, I, I would prefer if you would be able to finish this there.
Definitely, I would not, and you didn't have your head up. Yeah.
They're like, you want, because I mean, if, if somebody does have a house, they rent it out, there'd be, you know, somebody gets a, that's considered. And there's your taxes on it.
Yes, that's considered a short-term rental.
And there's your.
There is, there should be taxes swept on it for lodging. There would be, like, that, we don't have it, we lost any ordinances right now on that type of thing.
May I ask you something?
Yes.
So what you're saying is, like, if I have a house and I rent my three rooms out to a railroad worker, I have, it's my house, not the city's house, I have to pay taxes to the city for that, don't you? to the city for that, don't you think?
We have to pay the lodging taxes.
Why should I have to pay you for that? For what?
That's the discussion that we're having here. That's, that's why we're having this discussion as to whether that is something we want to do. One of the issues comes up and is that if you have a lot of those in your community, um, what that does is you have lodging, formal lodging, hoteliers, you know, lodging that pay all that, they have to pay inspection fees, they have to pay the lodging taxes. And then you have this group of citizens who are renting out their homes and they don't have to pay any of that. Um, and is that, is that, is that fair? Many communities look at that and say, that's not fair. They're providing a service, they have, in essence, a business, but they're not paying any, any lodging taxes. So that, that is the framework of this discussion. I'm sure, that's, that's.
Yes, thank you. Um, the first thing that pops out to me when looking through all of this is if we approve all these ordinances to ask for, or some of them, add to our city's way of living and doing business, how would we enforce it? That's a good question.
Well, Airbnb, I would take, so that's also.
Only if you knew you were renting a room out.
Right.
I rented my rooms out and I'm not going to pay the people money, but the railroad, because we got rid of our motel, I've rented mine out, why should I? Because the city got rid of our motel.
Well, that's where you could probably buy the radar.
But it's still, it's wrong. We do that, have to do that. That's why I don't think our little community, you know, ours is crazy. We don't have that many houses in it.
No, also the thing to keep in mind is that this would apply to all, uh, like, for example, the side by side festival that we bring to town and the people that come bring their R Vs and they purr on city property and those people pay that room to participate in that activity and they're not paying any lodging taxes.
Well, that's being, and RVs kind of part of the, you're not paying those taxes.
Uh, this actually defines champion.
So maybe that's something that, that we have to look at and delineate. We don't want to do that.
That's something that when Randy Drilling used to do the thing and all the people camped at the park, he was supposed to pay the taxes when he didn't do it.
Why is it that you have to pay the taxes?
Because same thing here, because he's not his property, it's the city's property.
Okay. So, so the other issue here is when you have Airbnb's and, and you're not renting out just a room, an extra room, but you're renting out, you purchased a house and you use it in an Airbnb, but you don't go through Airbnb. Um, then you're not paying those, those taxes and yet you have a house that has been taken off of the market that is now being used for visitors, which is good, we all know that that's, that's another, but we also have a housing shortage. So this is one of the ways that communities regulate that, um, because they see many of our homes and our homes have lower, lower values here. Um, so it's cheaper to buy, people from Portland say, well, buy a house and leave it empty or rent it out and make some money. And that house has been a longer in our housing market.
Basically, that's what they're trying to do with the tiny home?
Uh, well, that's not this discussion, but people are doing that now with, with homes. So is that something we see as an issue in our community or not? It sounds like, I'm surprised you're saying, no, he doesn't think it's an issue. Okay.
So I'm curious, uh, what is, what's the current tax rate for, for your tax, you know?
Yes, it's, uh, one point eight is the T R T, which is state lodging tax. I think it's seven point eight is the P L T, which is the county tax, which comes to us. So you have to, they have to collect at the same time.
But they have to be raised since I was here, not raised, it was a nine percent altogether.
Yeah, somewhere around.
So right now, the hotels in Oak Ridge are being taxed at nine percent.
Correct.
Okay. And so, um, reading through this, uh, you know, there's a lot of information on being able to use thirty percent of P L T revenue towards, uh, city services. I'm curious if that's something that we're doing right now?
I don't believe you.
Doing an R T and P and that's just, uh, T R T?
I believe it would be T R T funds that would be coming back to us.
P L T.
Okay, so is there a difference between T L T and T R T?
Yeah, it's quite.
But people get it, even the county gets it mixed up, so.
Okay.
But I've never gathered, the one point eight is T R T, which actually funds travel Oregon and collects statewide. The P L T, what, what the county refers to it is that they collect and that goes to Lake County, gets distributed back to the communities based on the receipts that they get after taking off. The way it comes to me, it's T R T.
Okay. There it is, there it is. Okay, so.
The line I was.
So with those T R T funds right now, in theory, we, you know, depending on how we write everything out, we could use thirty percent of that towards, um, city services, which I see as a state councillor thinking in the best interest of our city as something that we desperately need, uh, to go towards a general fund. So with that being said too, I, I do feel like it's only fair to tax Airbnb's who are doing the same thing, providing the same service as a hotel is, uh, for them to be taxed in the same way and especially because we do have a housing issue here in Oak Ridge. I've seen it.
How many houses do you own in Oak Ridge? How much taxes do you pay?
I'm not going to get into a conversation.
But I'm just trying to think, you gotta think of the way that we.
I'm going to ask that we, that we speak to one another respectfully and ask questions rather than be confrontational. And confrontational. To frame your question, please do not be confrontational. Council, how?
Um, gosh, I, I just wanted to say, I am kind of torn on the issue. I understand, um, absolutely what Tricia's saying, but I also just understand, Mr. Hadley, that if we, if we tax the Airbnb, then it's almost as if we deter them from doing it overall. And then that leads to less tourism maybe because there's less places for those people to stay at. So I think there's fair argument on each side, really. And I am really curious to know what other communities, our size and that are in our tourist market are doing.
A lot of communities are doing that with, with.
I think that's the balance though, you know, what do we care about more? Do we care about providing housing for, for the people in our community? Do we, do we care about giving some of the, my sister is a perfect example, right? Single mom, working like two jobs, trying to find an affordable house in Oak Ridge. And you have people that come in and buy Airbnb's.
Buy a home.
Buy a home and turn it into Airbnb. I've seen it. Fair enough. It's very personal for me, but it's actually a really huge number in Oak Ridge. You guys have a number?
So perhaps one of the ways we can look at this is there is, there may be two different versions of this. The version of I own a home, I have extra room.
Right.
Or I have a garage that, that I have converted and I would like to be able to rent now, as opposed to a whole home.
Right.
That is non, um, and what is that, uh, not owner occupied and being used as a short term rental rather than a long term rental. And that's what we need here. Perhaps the whole home that is used as a short term rental is what we want to focus on, not the houses that have the extra rooms or extra, whoever it is, um, dwelling unit on their own property, but they're using it to supplement their income. Um, because then there's still a resident there. So it's the non-occupied by a resident that we're looking at maybe focusing on. Does that feel, I think that definition a little better? So the short term rentals that are, um, non-resident occupied is really kind of what we maybe should focus on. And I think, I feel it's a fairness. I've heard lodging owners say to me, it's not fair. You know, I have to pay inspection fees, I have to pay, I have to pay these other fees and taxes and they don't have to. And I can't compete with that because as we all know, all of it is, it's a lot. That's the thing.
So, um, I think we actually do have to or they're supposed to, it's just that there's nobody managing because we don't have ordinances to allow us to whether or not we're doing.
Well, we have to put ordinances in place to do that. It's not that they have to. If we don't have an ordinance, they don't have to. And many communities don't have ordinances, so they don't. But other communities are, they do, they have ordinances of recognizing that we do have issues housing, uh, and stuff like that. And so that's what we're looking at. So kind of ordinances do things appropriately for our community in order to balance things out and, and possibly also to prevent the loss of, of rental housing for, for a long term rental, not just a short term.
So I'm hoping, are we going to, are we going, this is going to be a long process?
Yes, it is.
So I do have a comment that I'd like to have to put out there. Because this is all kind of, nothing can be solved today, but as we all know, unfortunately, we're a complaint driven process. And I just wanted to lay out that if somebody were to come into my office tomorrow and complain about their neighbor renting their house out to five or six people at a time, um, I'm going to have to apply the land use code to them, which means I'm going to have to make them either get, get a conditional use permit to continue to do so. So there are things in place right now. They're just, because of it being a complaint driven process, we haven't had any complaints.
So you have some, so you have some tools now?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
A neighbor.
It all depends on the zone. If it's a residential, yeah. Yeah, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, um, if somebody comes and complains tomorrow and I have to act upon it, it, I have to act upon it, right?
So what? That's a very interesting statement. So I guess, so because I have Airbnb's around me, you know, not mine, but there are some around me. So, if you're on Oak Ridge.
Oh, yeah, they are.
So, um, if I go and, like you say, it's really noisy over there, well, there's a noise ordinance that can be applied. If I, if I say they're parking, um, they're taking up all the parking on the street, well, I'm sorry, that doesn't work.
Yeah, that would work. But, but if I, but if somebody complains and we get verified that they're advertising X amount of people.
But we don't have an ordinance saying that's illegal.
Yes, we do. That's our land, our land use ordinance.
We have.
Yeah, so in the residential district, you cannot, um, without a conditional use permit, you cannot, um, permit a use or structure or, um, let me back up here. So in low density, uses and structures permitted conditionally would be boarding or lodging or rooming house for more than three boarders, conditional use permit required. So if you're boarding more than three people in a residential district, you have to have a conditional use permit, which also falls back upon, um, as I read the licenses required, with, they're also required with business license.
So there's a very old ordinance that, because they don't address how many people per dwelling. So if you have five bedrooms and you board out to five boarders, you're in violation. But if you board out to three, you're fined.
Yeah, that, yeah. Well, um, I mean, it, it makes, and it's only in residential districts as well, which should make sense with, um, with, with zoning, you kind of expect what kind of zone you're in as to what kind of facilities are going to be around you.
Right.
So, um, that theory.
So we have some ordinances that can help with nuisance.
Yeah, so.
When they're off the plane, because I have had some citizens come to me and say, it's not fair, you know, and whether it's valid or not, because I'm not going to go out there and investigate whether it's noisy or cloudy or whatever.
Yeah.
And I have always just said, well, then, I'll have a complaint.
Exactly, so, yeah, so while there is no decision today, I just wanted to share the fact of if somebody did make a complaint, um.
You have some ordinances.
This is what I, yeah, this is what I would start pursuing.
That doesn't address the issue of.
No, it's not.
Money.
No.
I had, just as I look at this, I, I looked at it to try to simplify as much as I could. So there's two things, two areas. So if you're concerned about the loss of revenue that you're not getting from these, uh, less than thirty day rentals, you have the ordinance that makes them either register or get a business license to operate in town, which allows you to track on who's somewhat tracked, on who's paying those taxes and if they are paying the taxes, uh, as well as to use in the background on the Airbnb type site. The other is, is the land use piece where are these temporary rentals disturbing the residential neighborhood in the area? And that's, and that's, so many of us, if we look at both those areas separately, uh, cannot do the other, simplify.
And I was going to say, one of the ones, if you refer to, uh, code ordinances, not the land use code, but code of ordinances, uh, one twelve point zero three, under definitions, um, it's number two in your, in your packet there. As I read that, it requires a business license, correct?
And, and eligible for health inspection.
Yes, so the city recorder may, uh, issue a license upon finding application has met all requirements of federal, state and county laws. So with that being said, if the city recorder feels it, or that position feels that, um, that they're ready, you know, they don't, they can hold back a, a business license because if somebody's not following all the rules. Um, but, but the second issue that, what to, to claim to that, is if somebody does complain and they go through the process and get a conditional use permit, conditions of a conditional use permit could be health and safety inspections, verify that you're paying every, all your taxes. So those are ways to accommodate that, that we already could use if we wanted, you know, if, if we were, or, or if we were directed to, um, say, in, you know, go after these, forget the complaint driven and go after these.
So going back to the, the question about what other communities, our, our fans, kind of, do this. I think that's something that as councils, um, we should probably spend some time in the town, do some, do some checking and see what other communities are doing. I know Hood River does this, um, I know there's several, and hosts that do this. And so let's do some, um, do some digging and, and find out how they have handled it, what their discussions are and what they ended up doing.
Kind of just being a little one with some of our, now, primarily, you know, it's been a whole different kind of thing.
Yeah, council, that's.
Um, something else that was interesting in here as well, uh, a recommendation is some type of quota. And, and again, that insulates our community and allows for more housing options for our community.
Yeah.
So as we go forward in this conversation, just thinking of all, all the options.
The least options that would be needed.
Dead.
Council opinion?
I'd also like us to think about, or at least research, um, the, I know T R T and R T and P, we already have some policies on how we distribute that, but, um, the actual, is it, Lane County or travel Oregon that you mentioned earlier that?
Or it's funded by proportion of the lodging taxes, the rest of it.
Oh, they get funded by portion, okay. Um, but somewhere somebody kind of sets standards for how the money can be used or should be used.
I had an interesting conversation with a Lane County person who does this P L T, that's what they call it. Uh, it used to be very, very much controlled, it was very specific. We actually had this submit report back from Lane County about how to use the money. Creswell has to rub it and now they just kind of give a P S A, you just rub it or and they don't even check, so it's really very broad.
So, so is what you're saying, you don't think any of the money that's currently being collected from our hotels that totals around nine percent is eventually coming back to us? You don't think there's any kind of, um, like this one thing that mentions thirty percent can go to your, our.
General fund? Into the general fund?
I think you could do that if that's what the community wants to do, because Lane County pretty much is just that you do, you can fit, but they do refer back to that O R S to talk about, uh, thirty.
Well, that's from, that information that I'm seeing, uh, or sorry, the legal board, legal board. In staying out, but I believe that is relevant to our state.
Well, all I'm trying to bring up is that I feel like we should, if, if that's something that we can implement in our other revenue that we're collecting, the nine percent from them ago, you know, that's something I think we should be looking at.
I mean, it's, it's not a huge figure, but.
No, it's very much, it's, it would be a question that we're thinking about, because we know that we were brought.
I remember, two more things actually, a question, do we have a number on how many years maybe you are actually on, I know there's a lot.
Um, actually, when I was doing some of this research, I, I reached this place that does a quick scan and turn over the number, it was somewhere around the.
Yeah, it's about seventy or something like that.
A little higher than that, but it's a natural.
There is, you know, it was, it was seventy or eighty, well, it's probably, you know, probably square left or, and maybe that area, but they just took a snapshot and said, yeah.
I know it's one costners and that's, they, you know, they're, they're a full time job and just, you know, Airbnb's, it's amazing how many there is. Um, I still can't remember, I should just say it's more than safety, but also for us, it's, it's on our minds that, um, it is really frustrating that. that we have a need for rentals, but at what point does that encourage builders to come in here, building houses, houses, and, and... At what point does that start happening, when there's no more rentals, and...
If you can, if you have, if you're, if you're... Well, I think we're kind of at a, at a point where we can, uh, we can stop, and, and we'll bring this up again, and, and open our research on it, and, and back up, and do a, a session, and have more discussion about it, and more over it. Um, I think all of you were, were ready for this, and, and, and keep an open mind about all the different aspects of this, and how it affects our, our people looking for rentals, how it affects their lives, how it affects our performance, and just, and all economics, and all that. So, is there anything else that councils can actually, or that, with that, maybe, the general...